Okay, it is seven o'clock by my clock. So we will start this meeting of the Kenmore Planning Commission. First item of business is citizen comments. Do we have any citizens who are present to share any comments?
We have no attendees currently and we received no email comments.
Okay, we will then move on to our next item of business, which is approval of the meeting minutes of the August 4th Planning Commission meeting. Do we have any motions for that approval?
So moved.
So moved. Okay, do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second, okay, we have a motion and second to approve the August 4th Planning Commission meeting minutes. Is there any discussion on those minutes before we vote? Okay, it looks like we're ready to vote. So more, I guess we'll continue doing the roll call vote?
Yes. Commissioner Greathouse?
Yeah.
Commissioner Lutzis?
Yes.
Commissioner Olson?
Yes.
Chair Orinshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Vanderland? Commissioner Mulcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
That concludes our roll call vote.
Okay, it passes. So our next item on the agenda is the, we have a staff memo and invite, I believe it's Lori who's with us to talk about the various attachments that she presented to us before the meeting and we'll go from there. So Lori, take it away.
All right. Debbie, I don't know if you wanted to say anything first or all, go ahead.
No, other than we provided you some background information following up from your last meeting. And tonight Lori is going to go over some potential approaches on process. You don't need to give a decision. This is just kind of giving a range. And this will then move into the next discussion at your next meeting on how these processes should apply to the different kinds of affordability projects. So it's sort of an iterative process. So I'm going to let Lori kind of walk through the memo and the processes.
Great. So good evening. I also wanted to let you know that Brian Hampson, the Director of Development Services is here. He graciously agreed to come to the Planning Commission in case you have questions about process in that department. And I thought it might be useful actually for me to start with sort of a description of the city organization so that when we're talking about these processes, you'll have a better grasp of how the Development Services Department operates. I feel a little uneasy describing this in front of Brian, but I know he'll jump in. Correctly. So Development Services is the department in the city that processes permits. And there is one planner and one building reviewer and one engineer. Those three disciplines review the permits as they come in. That's not very many staff. And I know as you, for example, if you were to look around the country, even around the region and look at expedited processes and that kind of thing, you may be looking at a department that has 15 planners and a whole separate department that's the building department and an engineering department where there are six or seven engineers in the different department. That is not the way Kenmore works. And I bring that up because Kenmore's process is already very streamlined and has received accolades for being a fast and a fair process. So there's not a lot of fat, I guess is where I'm headed with this. There's not a lot of things that the city can do in terms of expediting, unless, for example, additional staff were to be considered. Brian's team, they meet as a team. They went through a, I think it was called a lean process a few years ago that outlined all the steps of their permit processing and really honed in on any rough spots. And so I think I can say confidently that they have a really good process and that these teams meet weekly, at least weekly, to discuss where permit reviews are. And that they already essentially have a person who is an expediter, the permit tech and others. They have a sort of a roll call of permits. Where are these permits in the process? What are the holdups? What are the issues? And that really keeps everyone on track in terms of meeting their deadlines. So Brian, I don't know if you have anything to add, but I hope I did a fair job of describing how you all process your permits.
You did. Thanks Lori. And no, I don't really have anything to add at this time, but thank you for having me here tonight.
Yeah, thank you, Brian. Lori, I'm sorry, could you go over again the three people? I was writing those down. I'm not sure I heard correctly. So you have a planner, an engineer and?
And a building reviewer.
A building reviewer, okay.
Right, for the building codes.
For building codes, gotcha.
Yeah. So the planner really reviews things like critical areas and the zoning code rules and that kind of thing. And then the building reviewer reviews the building itself against the building codes. And then the engineer reviews things like roads, surface water management, that kind of thing.
Gotcha, thank you.
I think I'd also point out Lori, that there's two other disciplines that review for the city that we don't have any control over. And that would be the fire district, the fire marshal, does the fire sprinkler and alarm reviews. And then North Shore Utility does water and sewer reviews.
Yeah, a very good point. Okay. So in the materials that I sent out last week, I included some pages from Chapter 19 of the municipal code. And those are the processes, the different kinds of, the different kinds of permits that an applicant might apply for. There are three of them that are probably most relevant to this discussion of an affordable housing review process. Those are the type one, type two and type three permits. And I'm just going to touch on these briefly. And I want to start by saying, as we've discussed elsewhere, when you see the term city manager, it doesn't mean Rob Carlinsey, the city manager, he is not approving these permits. City manager in the municipal code means the city manager or his or her designee. And in this case, Brian is the designee. So the Development Services Director, when you see city manager, that actually is who is making the decision. So, and some of these permits, particularly the land use related zoning permits, have criteria for approval that are found in other chapters in the zoning code. So for example, a conditional use permit has a whole section and a set of approval criteria that must be satisfied in order for that permit to be approved. So type one permits, the decision is made by Brian. And with the help obviously of his staff, who can make a recommendation to him. There's no appeal for those permits and there's no public notice. So a building permit, for example, someone wants to build a house. They come in, they apply for their building permit. There's no public notice. It's reviewed by the department and then approved with no appeal. And another thing in that category is our accessory dwelling units. Those are the same type one kinds of permits. Type two permits are the ones that start to gain a greater level of complexity. And those, again, Brian makes the decision, but there is the possibility of an appeal to the city's hearing examiner. And that appeal, you know, the hearing examiner holds a hearing. He takes testimony and then he ultimately would decide whether the appeal was satisfactory or not. Type three permits are a recommendation by the Development Services Director. And then it goes, that recommendation goes to the hearing examiner. And the hearing examiner holds the hearing and makes the decision. And that appeal goes straight to court if there is an appeal. So the hearing examiner is sort of acting as a judge. The hearing examiner is a person who is hired by the city, but operates independently of the city to hear these land use issues. So those are the three permits I really wanted to point out, the types of permits. And you can see type two permits, a conditional use permit falls in there. That's maybe very likely a type of permit that an affordable housing development might need to get, or a variance, or a site plan review. Type three permits are probably not as likely. That would be for a preliminary subdivision. That's a whole, that's where lots are divided and it would be unlikely. A special use is a really rare kind of permit. I suppose it's possible, but I would think most kinds of permits associated with an affordable housing project would be either a type one or a type two permit. Then separately from that, there is the State Environmental Policy Act, or SEPA, review. That's a term I'm sure you've heard. And that review really looks at all elements of a proposal. It's focused on environmental issues, but there are all kinds of things that come up. Certainly, critical areas, traffic is a big one, housing. All kinds of facets of a project come up through SEPA review. And the outcome of that review is either a determination of non-significance, which means there is no significant adverse environmental impact, or a determination of significance, which means that an environmental impact statement has to be prepared. Now, parts of the SEPA process can be combined with parts of the permit review process. For example, noticing, often those, the notice for SEPA and the notice for a permit occur at the same time. And the appeals, if there's a SEPA appeal, it has to be what's called consolidated with an appeal for the underlying permit. So for example, if a project came through and it went through SEPA and it was appealed, that appeal would be held until a decision was made on the permit that was the subject of the SEPA review. And if that permit was appealed, the two appeals would be combined. That's a state requirement. You can't have multiple hearings on a project. And state law also determines the timing to some extent. They set out how long the initial notice period is, for example. And they also say that from the time you get a complete application, a complete application, that means all the pieces that are needed by the code, until the time you get your decision is supposed to take no more than 120 days. Now, why would it take longer? Well, a lot of it is because the applicant, who maybe has to provide more information, takes time to prepare their materials. And that doesn't count against the 120 days. If the ball is in their court, the 120 days is stalled until they provide the required information. So, you also read probably in the attachment three that I provided, that shortening a permit process may not be the decisive element for an affordable housing project. It certainly contributes, as we've talked before, time is money. But I'm not sure that a quick review process is going to be the ultimate incentive for an affordable housing project, but every little bit helps. And this, as part of the housing strategy plan, was just one more tool in the toolbox for the city to consider, to make a project more feasible. So unless you have questions about this part, I was going to jump right into the discussion questions.
Lori, I have a question about the length of time for Brian. So you mentioned that he, that that group went through a lean process. And so I'm assuming that that was to take out any extra time and become more efficient. So to me, that's part of expediting the process or making things more streamlined. So I'm wondering if Brian can share how much time they were able to take out of the process or what efficiencies they gained? And number one, in doing that lean process. And then second of all, if there are currently bumps along the way or issues that developers or builders have mentioned with the expedited process or the lean process that you come up with?
May I take over, Lori?
Yeah.
So we did do a lean process on one of our subdivision applications a couple of years back. And so part of the process is we'd go through each step that the city performs, not necessarily the required steps, identify each one of those steps. And so we lay that on a board and look at what steps are mandated by law and what steps the city does on its own. And so of course, we can cut some of the time requirements because if we can expedite and quicken the time that the city, the stuff that we're in control of. And so that's what we took a look at. And so we cut out approximately 80 steps. But you take into consideration, those are everything from very small steps, from where you pick up a piece of paper to where you put it in an inbox, to very big steps and where you actually change your processes. And so we actually shaved off a few weeks of time and for some of those land use decisions. And if you take into consideration, like Lori was talking about earlier, and we have one discipline for every review, when you can cut it down that fast from the start, that's where you really gain all your efficiencies. Now, you talked about recently, your last question is what the current developers are really concerned about in expediting our process. It's the stuff that we don't have control over. It's the outside agencies that we don't have control over. The North Shore Utility Districts, when they do their water availability or if they're doing a water calculation for the project. We don't have any control over that. The state law doesn't have any control over how fast they could take for those, you know? And also with the fire department, we're right now in the transition of a new fire marshal. We have interim fire marshal from Bothell, who currently does all of Bothell's fire review for them and has been asked to pick up Kenmore and Lake Forest Park without any additional resources. Now, he's doing the best he can. Him and his staff are doing the best they can. But again, that's the stuff that we can't have control over. And so right now, that's the biggest bottleneck for what we have in Kenmore is the stuff that we don't have control over when it comes to resources. The other option that we would have would be, you know, two options, would be hiring additional resources to take care of the internal stuff that we have control over, or contracting out through a consultant. Again, though, when you contract something out to your consultant, you lose control. You don't necessarily have those timeframes that you set on people that they can adhere to. Most of the times, if you're expediting a consultant, it's a lot more than you would be paying for a city to expedite. Typically, when you're paying a city, the way we do our fees is we get paid for our services. And so we can't actually make more money than it costs us to do it. And so only time that we could get expedited permit that would be above and beyond what we currently take in is if that staff was coming in and doing it as overtime. But unfortunately, most of the reviewers that work for the land use decisions, they're exempt and so they're not eligible for overtime. So we couldn't charge more money to bump them up to the front of the line. Consultants can, but they get really expensive. And so the three biggest bottlenecks that we have are stuff that, you know, the stuff that we're not control of, the two other agencies and the consultants.
Thank you. That was great. Very helpful.
Yeah, Brian, I had a question. And that, you mentioned that, I think the 80 steps you cut out and saves a few weeks of time. And I was also noticing on the Pierce County information that Lori sent there, they've done expedited review of affordable projects and shaved, I think it's at 15 to 20% of their total timeline. So with that time element, is there any way to quantify that in terms of cost for a developer? I know there's a lot of factors obviously for, you know, developer and their, you know, cost structure. But just trying to get some sense of, you know, how much does time saved translate to, you know, I guess money saved for a developer and presumably, you know, that much greater of an incentive? So any way to quantify that?
I'll do the best I can, but keep in mind, every development and every developer is different. So they all have different profitable margins that they have to meet. They have different bottom lines that they have to meet. But generally speaking, developers who come in understand that a land use decision is approximately six months to a year. And so anytime you're going over that six months is when you're really getting into their bottom line. And anytime you really go over that year, you're really getting into the bottom line. When you look at, you know, the city of Kenmore's process and what we typically do when it comes to affordable housing, cutting 15 or 20% in my opinion would be very difficult with the resources that we have, I think impossible. So realistically, you'd probably be looking at more like five, 10 maximum percent. And in my, you wouldn't be saving of the time to make it really pencil out for the developer. You know, the other option you have too is, okay, so if you're going to try to expedite something that would really pencil out for a developer, then we would be talking about additional resources. And unfortunately, I'd probably be a consultant, which once you throw that number into it, it just doesn't pencil out again. So.
Right, would that additional resource presumably be paid for by the developer?
Yeah, so we, the city wouldn't pay for the actual developers or, excuse me, the consultant work to do the developer's work. The developer would have to pay for it. And so that would be extra money out of their pocket that you would have to account for that loss of time. And so that margin gets really thin once you start getting, you know, past that or break even point.
Great, okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So. I have a question. I go to the last page on attachment three and it regards the statement by the National Association of Home Builders and then it refers to Price Waterhouse Cooper's report. And it says, "Shortening the permitting process by three months on a 22-month project cycle could make the difference in the decision of whether or not to undertake a project." What I'm hearing is that it may be virtually impossible to save three months that might encourage it. So I don't know how much, if that is a true conclusion, do we have an impossible task?
Yeah, I don't think you have an impossible task. I think that what you just heard is that, you know, in terms of the permit process itself, it's already quite streamlined. I mean, they've cut out a lot. There are few employees. And so the kinds of changes that we've put into the memo really deal with structural changes to the process itself. For example, moving a permit to the head of line, reducing the time below the 120 days, those kinds of things. And those are the things we want to discuss. Now, are we going to get three months savings out of that? Probably not. But again, this is an incremental step, not necessarily to incentivize affordable housing, but just to make a project easier to work through the system.
Thank you.
So with that, Brian, did you have something you wanted to say?
I do, but I'm going to let you finish because you might cover it.
Okay. All right. So actually, what I'm going to do is ask Maura if I can share my screen.
I will promote you to the host now.
Okay.
You can do that.
All right, I will, oh, there we go. We'll try again. Okay. So this is the shorthand for the questions that were in your packet. And we can do this a couple of different ways. I can go through each one. There are six of them, really five of them identified here, and talk a little bit about the pros and cons. Or we can talk about pros and cons as we talk about each one. Do you have a preference for how you'd like to proceed?
Invite my colleagues to share their preference. I would probably go for just, you know, go through each one. But if other people have other preferences, open to that too, so.
Okay.
Okay, why don't we go, why don't we go through each one then, Lori?
Okay, all right. So what I had in mind here was just to talk about these as potential options. And as Debbie said right at the very beginning, we know this is an iterative process, that you can't ultimately decide which process is best until you really decide what kind of project you're thinking of for the process. So much as we talked last meeting about the different kinds of projects, the different sizes of projects, the level of affordability, this time we're really hoping to provide the information on the process itself. Where are there opportunities to make a process more streamlined? And then again, what we're looking for is not a decision, but just some feedback as we go through each of these. And in the memo, we provided pros and cons. And I'm just going to walk through that and then leave it up for your discussion after each one. Okay. So the first one was the administrative process. And under this scenario, an affordable housing project, again, we haven't decided what size, any, we haven't decided any aspect of this project. That's to be determined. But that project would administratively be moved to the head of the line for permit review. So it comes to the counter and rather than falling into the queue, it would be moved to the top. So the pros of this are that it's simple. The affordable housing developer would know that they're always getting priority service. However, as cons, it prioritizes affordable housing over everything else. It could be a school project or another project, a parks project providing public benefit. And other applicants might not be aware of this prioritization until their project was delayed. And lastly, this is an approach that might require, as Brian said, additional staffing. This, the tight staffing and the reliance on the other agencies might make expediting in this way difficult without additional assistance. So thoughts?
I guess I'm a little bit confused about how we should approach this. So for instance, administrative processes and one of the cons was that the affordable housing would be prioritized over other projects. So to me, if the city council thinks that affordable housing is the most important, then they would just decide that that's okay, that it's prioritized. And then with the awareness, I think that could be indicated and as soon as somebody applied to the process for building, they could be made aware of the fact that there's a prioritization. And then the staffing, if we don't have budget for staffing and the city council doesn't want to prioritize that, then it's not going to happen. And so I don't understand what you want us to do when it seems like a lot of these questions are questions that the council would weigh in on.
Well, as always, the city council will make the final decision.
Right.
What we're asking of the Planning Commission is to give the council some feedback, some recommendations, thinking through the issues, thinking through the options about what approach the Planning Commission thinks is the most reasonable. So for example, the city council hasn't been asked the question, you know, should affordable housing move to the head of the line? The Planning Commission may have some reaction to that. Maybe the Planning Commission thinks it shouldn't move to the head of the line. So we're asking for sort of policy level reactions to this potential approach. And again, this may not be the one you choose. You may choose a different one, but I don't think you should feel constrained. You're not waiting for the city council to make a recommendation to you, to make a recommendation back to them. It's, they've given you, we took it to the city council and they really gave you free rein, as we discussed last time, to develop an approach that, as the Planning Commission, you think would be effective or appropriate.
Lori, if I may, my initial reactions to this were I-
Lori, if I, if I may, my initial reactions to this were, I, at first, it sounded good. But looking at some of the cons, I can see some issues, some of what Commissioner Greathouse has already expressed. If there's no, right now, room in the budget for additional staffing, then it may not be worth our time to look into this. Also, I can see some issues with prioritizing it over other projects. I'm not saying all projects, because affordable housing is definitely necessary, but other necessary projects for the community such as schools or, or other projects that might come up along those lines. And I can see that being an issue because of the importance of these other projects as well. And personally, I feel that they're both important and that some other projects may have even greater importance over affordable housing, depending on what that project is. And I don't think it's fair, or maybe even feasible, or beneficial for the city to put it at the front of the line if there may be more critical projects that impact more people in the city.
If I might say, maybe it comes down to you, when you're developing the criteria for affordable housing projects, then you might come up with some criteria that said if it was a housing, affordable housing project that met these certain criteria, whether it was the size of the project or the level of affordability, this process, you might say, might make sense for that kind of project. So I think, again, this is where the iterative process comes in. It may not be a one-size-fits-all in terms of process and type of project. So I think that's what we're trying to get to tonight is, maybe if it's any of these, as we've gone through them, that based on the pros and cons, you say none of this process would make sense for any, it wouldn't make sense for any kind of affordable housing project. But I don't think we're there yet.
Thank you, thank you, Debbie. To add on to what I was saying earlier, and I understand what you're saying, and that does make sense. I can see maybe an issue with trying to set the bar with affordable housing projects when we don't know what some of the other projects are. Because you may have projects for schools, or maybe even in the future, a new fire station or something like that. And those can be seen as more critical, even compared to larger affordable housing projects. And so I feel that it's hard to maybe create a criteria for affordable housing, just for affordable housing, without being able to assess some of the other projects. So I just don't know that it, it's, it's easy or feasible for us to, to do that. I think it would be more beneficial, I guess. I know it's not possible for us, but more beneficial if we assessed it based on the other projects that it's compared to. But that's not our job, and that's not part of this process. And so I just don't think, feel that this would work out as well.
Yeah, I have some, I have some hesitations kind of along the line of what Commissioner Greathouse and Commissioner Luce has mentioned about sort of a blanket favoritism for affordable housing. You know, for, in, in all cases, under all circumstances. But I, you know, I guess I, at this point anyways, I'd be a little more open to what Debbie suggested about, perhaps there might be some, you know, some, some weighting or scaling. I obviously don't have any idea of what that might look like. But yeah, I think sort of a blanket head of the line, I would be very hesitant on, based on what we know, what we know now, so.
It echoes most of the comments that we've heard so far. If the city believes that this should be, that affordable housing ought to be a high priority, but it can't fund that expedited process, I don't, I'm really concerned about what that does to other priority projects and how that might crowd out other things that the city needs to do, particularly if we set this as a hard criteria upfront. That's what really bothers me. If we have an exceptional project of great value that would result in a significant improvement in our availability of affordable housing, I think that's gonna be, again, an exceptional process. I would understand, I asked the staff the question, doesn't the city council have the ability to be able to make a special review in those cases? I think that type of unusual project really calls for avoiding a general standard, which would create problems for all sorts of projects, and instead have an exception process separately that the city council could fall back to if and when something like that truly came our way.
Yeah, I might just jump in here. The city does have a process for exceptional projects. It's called the development agreement process. And it's really sort of a negotiated permit done directly with the city council. The issue, one of the issues with the development agreement process is that it, it, it doesn't apply in the city's residential zones at the moment. So you cannot do a development agreement in the city's residential zones. And some of the projects that have been used as example, as an example, are in those residential zones. But the development agreement process, you have to provide public benefit. And by providing public benefit, you can also waive development standards. And, and then again, it's, it's done directly with the city council. Their attorney fees is not, I don't think it's an inexpensive process, but it is a way to deal with an exceptional project.
Would affordable housing, Lori, fall under that public benefit, you know, umbrella?
It could.
I know it's very, very case-specific, but.
Right. And in fact, when we, when we were first talking about this process, an affordable housing review process, one of the options that was considered was, well, should the development agreement chapter be amended to, to add this kind of a project specifically to that chapter? Again, the, probably the downsides are there, there's attorney time to develop the development agreement, and it is a negotiated process with the city council, so it probably takes more time. But that certainly isn't one approach. And maybe what I could do, where your next meeting is actually to provide the development agreement chapter. So you can see how that works. It does not fall in these three types of permits, type one, two, and three. So I, if that sounds good, I'll make a note to myself and we'll give you the development agreement chapter.
Can I weigh on, weigh in, Lori? The, one of the biggest hurdles we hear about when it comes to development, when it comes to development codes is parking. And the first thing that developers will ask us is for a reduction in parking. And really, the only way to get a, a good reduction in parking when you're looking at these affordable units is through the development agreement. And so there are ways to, you know, calculate parking, you know, based on the different projects and the products that are out there. But, you know, not having that flexibility with the development agreement, that the development agreement has on some of these projects is a little bit difficult. So extending it to the residential areas for affordable units could be a pretty low-hanging fruit. And then also, as if Lori shares that chapter with you, we can kind of take a look at the rest of the language and how that affects affordable housing. So there might be some other little tweaks that you could do with that, too.
What would it require to change that process to include residential?
It's a simple change. It's really just expanding the zones that are listed in the development agreement chapter. I think the hesitation historically with extending the development agreement chapter to the residential zones is that there's no restriction on what kind of a project you can apply for. And so there was concern that opening the door to any type of a project in the residential zones might be a problem. So that's why it wasn't extended. And if it were to be extended, but maybe you could think about whether, again, the, what the criteria would be, only certain types of projects could apply for a development agreement in the residential zones. That would be something to think about.
And back to Lori, your comment about the attorney's fees. You could write the code to where the council will have the discretion, you know, to cover or waive those fees for the applicant. Currently, any project that's a city-sponsored project or city-initiative, initiated project, we have the ability to waive those attorney fees. So there's little, there's little tweaks, you know, low-hanging fruit, that I think that could be picked up through there.
I think that's encouraging. And as I recall, we use the development agreement approach in, when we did our general review of commercial, non-residential area. And that gave us a lot of flexibility to deal with these sorts of exceptional, high-end projects that might come in. But I would encourage us to take a look at that. What I would want to be very careful about here is as we move into the residential area, that we define that very tightly and very securely. We make sure we secure sufficient community notice requirements and input to make sure that we don't end up with something that the community doesn't like, and the city doesn't end up in a problem with a backlash. So, well, in those, with those caveats, I would encourage us to take a look at that. Creating something like the development agreement that could be used in exceptional circumstances for affordable housing only.
Okay. So, ready to move on to number two? Get some thoughts on that option?
Sounds like it, yep.
Okay. So number two is to reduce the review times specified in the zoning code. So in this case, there would actually be code amendments that would describe how long something takes. And they would be less than the current mandated times. So the pros, obviously, this is very clear, and all applicants would know what the affordable housing priority was. But again, staffing could be an issue if a bunch of projects came in at the same time and all of a sudden, we've got these codified short review times. We're back to an issue of can realistically that be accomplished?
Yeah, that was my hesitation in that. I just wondered about the practicality of that, especially you said that process is already, you know, quite, quite streamlined, relatively speaking. So I, I just wonder if this is really a viable, viable option, so.
Okay.
That's just in my, my view.
Okay. Any other comments?
I have one, Lori, that would support what you were talking about. Might help the commissioners understand it a little bit more. If you have a, a bunch of land use applications that come in, and we have a, that city timeframe on a particular land use process, in this case, affordable housing, we have state requirements, as Lori was talking about earlier, that we have to follow on other land use processes. And so it just could become an interesting predicament when we're juggling different timeframes that are required by us. And state law would definitely precede the city-level timeframes. And so I think it just supports what you guys are, you know, currently talking about and how this probably isn't a realistic approach.
Brian, in the development agreement process, are there, are there still the state timeframes that are included in that?
It depends on what the application is for. And so if somebody comes in for a, a subdivision for a lawn plot, then yes, we do have timeframes by state law that we would have to meet. In turn, as Lori was talking about before, if we have an agreement with a developer, we can modify those timeframes. And so a lot of times, what people would do is they would come in for a preliminary agreement with the council. So they would have a, you know, a process laid out and a project laid out. There'd be some kind of agreed-to time, timetables in that preliminary agreement. And then follow, the, the actual development agreement would get taken to the council after the land use processes have been figured out. But they would be concurrently negotiated with the developer. And so at the end, it would be brought to council for their ultimate improvement. But there could be ways to get around those timeframes through the development agreement.
I think it's important to note that the development agreement doesn't mean to say you don't have to go through the permit process. The development agreement is basically saying that when you go through the permit process, these parts of the code are either waived or modified.
Right, I, I think it gets to the city council's point about standards versus process. So that the development agreement was really adopted to deal with amendments to standards rather than to move to a quicker process. All right, shall we move on to number three? So number three is a reduction in the level of process. So we talked about the primary three. And the advantage of drop, of dropping down to a lesser process is that you don't have as much to do. However, and it primarily affects appeals and it affects public notice. So for example, if an affordable housing project that would typically require a type-two permit were to drop down to a type-one permit, there would be no public notice and there would be no administrative appeal. This is similar to option five, which is elimination of appeals. But it's a different strategy so that you would physically move this type of a permit into a type of permit review that would automatically reduce the level of the process. And again, we're not saying, you know, again, depending on what criteria you settle on for an affordable housing project, maybe there are some that this would be appropriate and others that it certainly wouldn't be. So just initial reactions are what we're looking for.
Initially, if I may, I feel that this could be a very important tool that we could utilize. Like Lori was saying, I think if we really construct some of our criteria on when this can be used, if this can be used, you know, more widely and could be something that really helps us out and helps expedite the process. And I think this ties back into what Commissioner Vanderlin was saying earlier, was if we, you know, expand the development agreement into residential areas, we'd, we'd want more public input for some of the larger projects. And I think we can tie that in with this point right here. And where smaller projects, it would be very beneficial to have a reduced level in the process because it would help expedite it. But for some of the bigger ones, I can see where it would be necessary and would require public input depending on where it's located. So personally, my thoughts are, I feel that this, this is a very, very good and feasible option that we can utilize based on the criteria that we may establish later, based on the size of the project.
That's some option, there may be some opportunity here. But I would be very leery of jeopardizing or hindering or limiting, in particularly in residential areas, the ability of the neighbors to receive adequate notice and to be able to give input into the process. I would really be looking under this option to how we're going to protect that input and ensure that particularly the close neighbors who'd be impacted by this change have an opportunity to provide input or are aware of the proposal well in advance.
Yeah, I have the same concern as Commissioner Vanderlin about public input, I think, especially in, you know, we're talking about, you know, residential projects. I think that's, that's, that's very, very important. So yeah, that, I would share that. projects. I think that's, that's, that's very, very important. So yeah, I would share that concern and look for a method to, to allow that sort of public, you know, public input.
If I may clarify what I had said earlier, I completely agree with both of you. I, what I was trying to say here is that I feel that this could be utilized based on the size of the project. So if we set the criteria fairly low and, and we say that projects from here on up, the size of projects can't, or this doesn't affect them and that there needs to be public input based on a certain size of a project where we, we would definitely know that there's bigger impacts in the surrounding community. But maybe for some of the lesser ones, it might be beneficial as we're going along with this to look into this potential option to clear them out of the way. So I completely agree with you Commissioners Orangehall and Vanderlin. And I can totally back up the importance of, of public input. I guess what I'm just trying to say is, is this might be beneficial for some of the smaller, less significant projects and it really depends on where we set that criteria, if that makes sense.
Thank you for that clarification, Nathan. I think that's important. One of the things I think we might want to consider too is the location in addition to, we did a lot of work to create the opportunity for incentives for affordable housing in multifamily and some other areas within the city. If we were to back that up with some process improvements through what we're talking about right now in those specific areas, we might find that that would have a more beneficial effect in expediting the development of affordable projects in those multifamily and other areas we've already designated as high density areas in our zoning versus trying to break, break into the residential, single family residential area. Political opposition alone, I think, I think would be an issue to look, but I think we'd be, we'd probably be more successful attracting new development in those areas where we've already created that, those development incentives. If we could improve the process again in those specific areas, I think we just enhance that, we might see quicker movement on more substantial projects.
Can I weigh in Laurie?
Sure.
Wow, you guys are really hitting the nail right on the head. These, this is a tricky one, but you're looking at it correctly from both aspects, from the residential, single family residential and the multifamily. I couldn't agree more with Vanderline more that there should be some, another look at the multifamily tax incentives or the, the affordable unit tax incentives for the multifamily. That's a great idea and both of the other commissioners have hit the, or all three of you have hit the nail on the head when it comes to the two issues that we deal with, with affordable units and residential, and that is public notice and appeals. Everybody thinks that we should notice these and, and we do, we get a lot of great notices or comments from the public. But unfortunately, we get people who appeal it just because of the nature of the affordable unit. And they'll use different excuses to appeal it and really there's no grounds for them on what their appeals are. But unfortunately, it delays the project and it can actually push it past the developers, their market rating, so then they miss out on the project. I don't know if Laurie, Laurie and I and Debbie and I have all talked about this before, but there's a really good opportunity to come up with a a different category, you know, right now we have the category one and the category two. Maybe there's a hybrid that you guys could consider, you know, something in there that has that public notice but doesn't have that administrative appeal. And so, you know, when it just comes to affordable housing, it might be a really good suggestion or, you know, something that you guys could look at.
Option number six.
That's very interesting because that's kind of the way I was thinking was going to, if we were to come up with some kind of a hybrid that was specific to the areas we've already designated in our plan as being high density. I think we would have more community input and I have a feeling here what Brian has to say, but I think the developers are more likely to, to go for something in those zones where they already have some opportunity for development incentives rather than tackle the single family neighborhoods where they couldn't really do substantial developments, which would limit their potential for profit there as well as limit the potential for actually creating significant new affordable housing.
And I guess we still have to have that discussion. That was something we mentioned last meeting was if we want to open up affordable housing projects in the residential area. We haven't, I don't believe, well, that, that topic came up, but I don't think we've made a decision and I think that might be something in the near future to maybe decide, well, not decide on, but get, collect our bearings on so that we can kind of guide how we view some of these other ones. Because if we limit it to non, if we, if we keep affordable housing from non-residentially zoned areas, which was one of the options, then, you know, there might be more leeway or give or support for some of these opportunities. So I think that's something to keep in mind as we move forward.
Okay, so moving on to number four, option number four. This is kind of a unique one. In this case, the city doesn't do anything except to say that a developer can apply for expedited review. So as Brian mentioned, there are often other permits involved or financing issues or other things that may really be driving the timeline for an affordable housing project. They often, if they're involving public or nonprofit funds, it may take months to put the financing together. So in this scenario, the developer would come to the city and apply for expedited review based on their individual timeline. They would say, we need this timeline to make our project work. At that point, the city could decide whether adequate staffing was available or whether consultant help would be needed. Again, that would have to be paid for by the developer, so there's a trade off there. But the pros of this approach is that the developer really is the one saying, this is what I need. We're not making a foregone conclusion that they have to have it in this amount of time. And then the con really is that there's no guarantee that there would be a quicker review process. It would depend again on staffing and/or whether the the cost of paying a consultant would be significant or would not create more problems for the affordable housing project than it would have otherwise.
Is there really a downside to this one? I guess I would ask Brian. If either they're going to pay this, the city, if the city has resources or they'll get one of those consultants, I'm assuming, and pay for that. So is there a downside to making this option available?
In my opinion, there isn't. This is a pretty low hanging fruit that we should take advantage of. And what I really see, that which developers I really see taking advantage of these are the developers who are getting the funding from the nonprofit agencies. And so like Laurie was talking about, there's different milestones that they have to meet when they're applying for different funding levels. And so they'll, they have to go through three or four different application times. And if they don't have a schedule from the city or some kind of commitment from the city, then that could really throw them off. It could throw them off a year or two in their funding. And so while we tried as hard as we can right now to help them out and meet their funding, you know, they've had a couple of them recently, there's nothing set in the code or codified anywhere that would, you know, prevent somebody in the future from not providing that service.
So Brian, can I just follow up a little bit on that? Would you say this, you know, that there's obviously a level of uncertainty here in this, you know, in this idea for, for developers certainly, do you think that would be outweighed by the, you know, the benefits you just kind of outlined?
It would if the developer is really looking for that, that nonprofit funding, it would the timing. Sometimes we get developers who are looking to utilize the affordable residential density incentives and they're, they're in a hurry, so this wouldn't benefit them.
Okay. Is that commonly the folks who are doing these kind of affordable housing projects?
Not commonly and not necessarily to the level that we would like. You know, the people who are securing the nonprofit funding, those are the, the larger affordable units that we're really looking for in the city.
Thanks.
Okay, so number five, we've touched on this a little bit back in the reduction in level of process comment. But this has to do with the elimination of appeals. It's not, it's never the total elimination of appeals. There is always an appeal opportunity to court or to whatever body hears a particular type of appeal outside of the city. But this has to do with appeals inside the city and Brian mentioned that one thing that really can delay a project is if there is an appeal. Now, you can weigh whether an appeal is a legitimate appeal, but I will say often that the appeals are not successful and, and are sometimes used just for the very purpose of delay. So in this scenario, there would not be administrative appeals and that could either be of a local permit, like a land use permit or of the SEPA review. The city's not mandated to have a local appeal. We have local appeals. But one way to expedite this, it wouldn't change the public input part of it, but there wouldn't be a local appeal. If someone wanted to appeal it, it would have to go to court. Any reactions?
How often does that happen? Is it common? Get appeals or are those on certain types of building? Is it likely that we would, maybe we would get one for a residential area but not one that's putting affordable housing in a high density? Or is there some criteria where the appeals typically come up?
I think it's unpredictable, really. To know, I don't think we would be able to define for you the likelihood of an appeal unless Brian can sort of say based on history of appeals. If it's more likely in a residential neighborhood, but again, I think it's probably more down to the type of project that's appealed rather than the location itself.
Well, I'm struggling a little bit about just a sort of a blanket elimination of appeals. I mean, I see what you're saying about what might be considered, I don't know, frivolous appeals or, you know, just to delay a project, but you know, how do you distinguish between that and, and what might be a, you know, I don't know, legitimate concern about a decision? So how, how could that, I mean, is there any way to address, you know, different
Yeah.
Appeals, I mean.
Well, I might point out that the loss of an administrative appeal never prevents someone from appealing. Okay, so there's always, they could still go to court. And, and I guess you could say forcing someone to go to court makes them really think about whether they, they feel they have a legitimate appeal. Now that is, I don't know. That, that, this is really a policy decision about whether the city wants to provide a local opportunity. Another thing you could think about was, well, maybe we don't want to eliminate appeals, but currently the fee is so low that it doesn't take much of anything to make an appeal. Maybe it should be a higher, we should keep administrative appeals, but it should be a higher fee. There are all kinds of permutations here. And, and really the goal is to make it, not to eliminate appeals, because there are legitimate cases for appeal, but to not make it so easy to appeal that every project could be appealed with, with little penalty to the appellant.
Right, what is, what is the fee currently Laurie for? Or is there a standard fee for administrative appeals now?
Yeah, Brian, do you know off the top what that fee is? Because I don't.
It's a hundred and twenty-five dollars. And that was purposely reduced by the council for that amount.
So the question is, does the city have a trend where there are numerous appeals just for the sake of causing trouble? It seems to me that if the city residents don't like a particular project, they're gonna, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming that under number five, you would still have some kind of public comment. Is that correct? Where you'd have notices and let the public comment on a project?
I think in all cases where there are appeals, there is public comment opportunity.
It's just that under this particular one, if this was used for an affordable housing project, there would be an elimination unless you wanted to go to court. There wouldn't be this kind of lightweight. Not that I want to say people are causing a problem, but I hear what you're saying that. Do we know the history of why the city lowered that fee?
I don't, and I don't know how long ago they did that. Maybe Brian knows the answer. Because it might be, might be helpful to know that the history of that.
The initial fee reduction was done back in 2011 and it was specifically to be an option that low income housing would have to take advantage of. And so prior to that, the appeal fee was thousands of dollars and the council thought that that was too much for low income housing. We did a, a study on what it would, what it costs the city to process the appeal. So we looked at all the appeals over 10 years and took the average and it was well in excess, in excess of thirty-five hundred dollars. And so we took that value to the council with our fee adjustment and they chose, that was in 2017, they chose to stay with the hundred and twenty-five dollar administrative appeal amount.
So it seems, so it seems to me that the city recently reviewed that and feels that they don't want to make that fee. They don't want to use a fee to eliminate appeals. They just want to, in this particular scenario, it's just eliminating them so for the affordable housing project, correct?
I would say that's correct, except I don't think the direct linkage was made. I think the concern from what I heard from Brian was that it was a high fee and those perhaps lower income folks could not afford to pay the fee. That may have been the concern, but did they look at the issue of affordable housing versus the cost of appeals and the time it took to take, to process? No, they did not directly look at that issue. And Brian will correct me if I'm wrong.
If I may, Laurie, I feel if we eliminated this, this city level appeals and just went straight to the courts, it could almost cut out the middleman in a sense. If there are people who are passionate enough to make these appeals and take it to the courts anyways, even if, you know, they, they don't get the result that they want at the city level, then why shouldn't we let them just go straight to the courts? And so I feel that if we did that and we went through that process and, and maybe took away the city level appeals, that the more passionate people would still make these appeals and it would eliminate the more, some of the more, as, as I think you guys had said earlier, some of the more frivolous appeals just to, to hold up the process. So we're not eliminating appeals altogether, but we're kind of, I guess, trying to make it a more serious process that still takes into account the people who are serious about appealing, but also removes some of the appeals that aren't made on a more serious basis, if that makes sense.
But another way to look at it is especially if a project abutted some kind of a residential area, those residents might not have the funding they would need to go to court. So eliminating this administrative appeals makes them have to spend money maybe they don't have.
And I think it's important, especially in a city our size, to not force people to litigate against the city, that there should be some kind of an appeals process to be heard. Yeah, it might, you know, I get that we want to make affordable housing be an expedited process in our city, but I don't think we want to do it to the point where you would eliminate the opportunity for a resident who's paying taxes and could be affected greatly by the project to at least make some kind of an appeal. That's probably why they lowered the fee, because they tend to be a council over time that wants citizens to be involved. You know, maybe we should ask about, when has this happened? Has there been any kind of an affordable housing project that got shot down because of an appeal? Probably not.
Lori and Brian, didn't you say that in the past, a lot of these appeals are, you know, end up not going through or are dismissed? Because there's not as much factual, or not factual, but not as, there's not a base to the appeal? Is that correct, Lori? Is that what you had said?
I, I, I think that is the case. I want to emphasize, though, those aren't just affordable housing appeals. I think that's most appeals. I'm not sure the city has been overturned, at least as long as I've been there. I, I don't know if Brian has, I mean, looked at all those appeals, maybe he has better sense.
Typically, it's, it's difficult to overturn a city's decision if we've dotted all of the i's and crossed every t. Now, there may be some modifications that the hearing examiner or the courtman make, but it's a pretty minor in nature, if any.
Okay. One thing that I want to comment on, and this may, I'm not sure what your reaction will be to this, but there is, I would say, a stigma about affordable housing. I think it's fair to say that that is the case. And so another approach, and I don't even know if we could do this, but another approach might be to say, you can appeal an affordable housing project on the basis of X, but not on the basis that it's an affordable housing project.
So more structured guidelines on the times that you can appeal this kind of project?
No, the content of the appeal.
That's, that's what I meant, I'm sorry.
Yes, yeah. I don't know, I don't know what your reaction is to that, but I would definitely say there's a stigma and that an appeal might come in because it's affordable housing, not for any other reason.
No, I like that, and I.
I think, go ahead. I'd like to pursue that approach. That is something that we would definitely have to chat with the city attorney about, that probably restrict appeals based on content. So it's an idea, but I don't know how viable it is legally.
You know, this is where democracy gets real messy. You know, there's already a right and a privilege out there that people would see related to local appeal, and we're talking about taking that away. And I agree, there is a stigma out there related to affordable housing. Taking it away isn't going to make this any better. So I also understand and absolutely agree that there are people who like to weaponize our appeal processes. It happens all the time, and not just related to affordable housing. Look at some of the environmental things we have. I'm a great advocate of environmental concerns here. As much as I'd like to see us create some efficiencies here related to the appeals, I just don't know if that's going to be acceptable to the community. And I worry about what the, the flip side of this would be. So I'm not sure what we gain out of this. And I guess that's what would change my mind on this. If someone could show me or make us aware that there is a significant advantage to be had here that doesn't end up being viewed by the public as taking away a privilege or that they have today to manage their own neighborhood, then I think definitely about it. But I just have a feeling there's going to be a huge backlash among folks if we try to do something like this.
And I also would like to comment, I think our community is actually very welcoming. And so if an affordable housing project is done well, it would be received well. Most of the affordable housing projects are not 100% affordable housing. It's just that they're making a provision for some of the units to be affordable. I think that the successful projects that I've seen is that it's not singled out for a particular, you know, income bracket of affordability, but they make some of the units available at certain, you know, percentage of income. So it seems like the old ideas where you had the housing projects and everybody that lived in there was, you know, a certain income level has gone by the wayside. I, I can't think of one project that I'm aware of in the East Side or North End. There's some beautiful projects that have gone in that have affordability factors in them, but they aren't 100% affordable housing or Section 9 or anything like that. So, you know, we can work hard as a community to, you know, and I realize this is the permitting process, not the public review, but there's lots of things that a potential developer could do to present their project in a way that is, appeals to the community that they're building in. And so, but I don't like this particular option because of the controversy behind it. It doesn't mean we won't come back to it and that we totally ruled it out, but of the ones we're talking about, it's at the bottom for me.
I absolutely agree. I think if there was a way, after talking with our attorneys, that you could limit to the appeal to something like, are you, is the project, is or is not consistent with existing standards? Whether that's density, whether that's, you know, design, things that are concrete?
Yeah.
Then I'd be willing to think about this again. But a blanket, a removal of that right, I think, just, this isn't going to be effective. I don't think it's going to do anything. And as Carol said, I think the, the public reaction would, would taint everything else we're trying to do.
I agree, actually, with you, Commissioner VanderWoon and Baker. I do feel that that would be a better alternative, is to maybe investigate this a little bit further with the city attorney. As I kind of expressed before, based on what I've heard, it sounds like there's a lot of appeals, as you had said, that are sometimes weaponized in a certain way, just because of maybe the stigma or something else, but there's not as, as much of a base to them. So I think if we could find a way, or at least investigate that, that alternative or that opportunity with the city attorney, that might be a better way. And then we can still keep the appeals, which I think would be good to have, but also make sure that we don't, the process isn't overrun. I do have a question for Brian, really quick. In your time here, have you seen many projects either withdrawn or kind of fall apart based on appeals and the time that it tried, that it draws the project out?
I would, I wouldn't say specifically for affordable units, houses. We see projects die off because of appeals or how long they last, but I wouldn't say that I could point my finger to any specific standalone affordable housing project.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarification. That helps.
I had a question. If staff is going to approach the city attorney on this, one of the considerations might also be whether we might permit an appeal if there are X number of people that support the appeal. That way, it's not just one person or two persons. Just another question to ask the attorney.
All right, well, moving on to number six. Number six is actually a combination of one through five.
Yes.
And this is really to think about, rather than trying to fit it into one of these other boxes, we would create a new process specifically for affordable housing. And certainly, we could more easily tailor that process to different types and sizes. The only con that I can think of is that it just adds more to the zoning code. And I, I know that we have worked hard to simplify and streamline the code where possible. This adds another layer of complexity, but that's not necessarily a bad thing.
Lori, do you think you've heard enough tonight about our, you know, opinions on the other options to try to, you know, put together some kind of draft ideas for this unique new process? Do you feel like?
Yeah.
Because I agree, we're, we're not going to do it on the fly here, you know?
No.
Doing à la carte thing, but.
Right. I think I've heard several ideas. And so I don't think it will be coming back with one proposal. I think it will be coming back with, here's how we could structure it. Here's maybe how we could meld the types and sizes together, perhaps? Maybe some options? So I think it's going to be probably several different ideas that come forward.
Okay.
Oh, I'm really interested in the development agreement process that we talked about. And I'm not real clear on where that fits kind of into the bigger picture and when that followed and, and other suggestions that we have, you know, how those might augment or modify that process or what have you. So can you send us a copy of that agreement, or can we look at that somewhere?
Yeah, I absolutely will include it with your next packet. If you want to look at it before then, it's in the municipal code. So you would, you could go to the website and find the Kenmore Municipal Code. It's in Title 18, and I wish I could tell you off the top of my head what chapter it is, but I can't. If you'd look at the index, the first page of Title 18, it gives you the table of contents, and the chapter is titled Development Agreements.
Okay, great.
I think it's 110, Lori.
110, okay. So it'd be 18.110. You could also just go to the first page of the municipal code in Google Development Agreement, and that would take you there, so.
Great, thank you.
All right.
Another comment if it's okay.
Well, I guess I should, that's Commissioner Orangehall's, your Orangehall's call. I keep saying, oh, fine, but I shouldn't be doing that.
Go right ahead, of course. Yeah.
So I know that, yeah, a lot of discussions have been about cities' efficiencies and what we can do to make the process more efficient. And I think that there's another approach that we should think about, too. It's incentives. But those are a heavier lift, you know, those are a little bit more work. Those have to be done either on another level, a state legislature level or King County level. But, you know, I think that you're probably all familiar with some other incentives that were put in place by a state legislature. I think about the one specifically for multifamily tax exemption. It's called an MFTE. And so what that really does is gets density into your different areas of your town. It does have a couple of different components. One is a eight-year multifamily tax exemption. It doesn't have any affordable unit component. You have a 12-year tax deduction that would have an additional unit. But I've always thought about, you know, why doesn't affordable units, affordable housing have a tax exemption? You know, why don't we have our lobbyists talk to state legislature about having a statewide tax exemption for affordable housing? Of course, that's not something that we're going to solve or resolve in the next, you know, a few months or something, but it's a bigger picture type of discussion that needs to happen. Also, on the King County level, as we talked about before, when you have a developer who's looking towards nonprofit funding for affordable housing, a lot of times there's different steps that they have to meet in order to get a good score, to get different levels of funding. And I'm not a expert on what those scorings are, but the scoring to me, especially the King County scoring level, it was really difficult to meet sometimes. You know, for example, you'd get a bad score if you were a certain distance away from a grocery store. And so maybe if we had some kind of incentive for King County to relax their scoring for different types of affordable housing, you know? But what that animal and creature looks like, I'm not really sure. But I'm just thinking more of the lines of incentives and how can we incentivize development?
I like what Brian's saying, but I think what Brian's saying is that there are other things that need to do to provide incentives. And we're just, right now, the Planning Commission is just tackling the process piece. So I think what he's saying is we can tackle the process piece, but to actually get more affordable housing, there might need to be more discussion, whether it's with the legislature or the funding process that would then help get, get more affordable housing to incentivize it. So I think, I agree with Brian, but I think that's probably outside this, the scope of this current project.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner.
Lori, I have a question. This is something that occurred to me as I was reading through the packet for this last week. Is it possible to look at the grade of the different types of affordable housing in the city? See if there is one type that's been expanding more than another or something like that? Just to keep in the back of, I guess, our minds as we're looking at maybe where we, how we set the guidelines for some of the different types of affordable housing?
We, we certainly can look at different types of projects. There aren't that many. And then we can look at where in the code we have incentives for affordable housing. Sort of the zoning districts that we are encouraging affordable housing in, where the transit-oriented development district is. The Planning Commission made some changes to the community business zoning about affordable housing. So we certainly have areas, geographic areas of the city where we've encouraged affordable housing. And then where it is actually being built is a much smaller pool and probably very few in the last several years. But we certainly, we have that information.
Or maybe even just like the annual growth rate of each different type of affordable housing, or maybe over the last, I don't know, five or 10 years or something like that, just to see how each kind of category is growing? Because I know we had discussed at the last meeting that there's different categories. And maybe if we see that one category is lacking and not growing as much as maybe another, and we're falling behind on that, it might be beneficial to kind of tailor our expedited process towards that one category to kind of encourage it to catch up a little bit.
Okay.
If that makes sense at all. Okay.
Lori, could you maybe share the maps we created in the zoning changes, particularly the multifamily, where we've created incentives already based on density?
Sure.
That might be something to be useful to take a look at as we go down the road here.
Okay.
I think we need to refresh our memory of just how extensive the incentives are, both in the type of, and level of incentive, but also the physical location.
Sure.
But I think what we're getting to now is just the question that I think Nathan was, was asking or getting to is, so we've created all these incentives, but we seem to have very few people picking us up on it.
Well, they've just been the last few years, so.
Yeah, well, still, it's out there, you know? So maybe we're seeing some, but I think we're asking our question in the, what's before us right now we're being asked to do, is, is this one of the reasons why? And how do we tip the scales that would encourage people to take advantage of these and make it more advantageous for them to do it? Obviously, there are reasons, the economy, the pandemic today is certainly part of that. It may help us, one, understand what we need to do, but also maybe keep us from moving too precipitously and offering things up beyond what the market is really going to be looking for when things stabilize three, four, five years down the road. I think just having physically that map in front of us, that was always useful to me, physically to see that, how much we've already done.
I've added it to the list, and I can also add in the information that Nathan required. Nathan required, Commissioner Lutzis requested about categories of affordable housing. And which are growing or which we've seen in the last few years.
Thank you.
Great, well Lori, anything more for us tonight?
I, I don't have anything more on this topic. I know we wanted to talk about the September first meeting. And are proposing that that meeting be canceled so that we would return to you the second meeting in September.
So do you need a motion from us to, to do that?
Yeah, that would be ideal.
Okay, we're open to a motion.
Our motion to cancel the September first meeting?
Second? Oh, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded to cancel the September first meeting. Any discussion on the motion? I think more, we need a, another. Roll call, please.
Chair Olson, or sorry, Commissioner Olson?
I support that.
Commissioner Lutzis?
Yes.
Commissioner Greathouse? Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Vanderland?
Yes.
Commissioner Mulcair?
Yes.
Chair Orangehall?
Yes.
That concludes our roll call vote.
Okay. So anything else from city staff or my colleagues for, for us tonight? Okay, thank you all. We're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you in September.
Thank you.